Okay, we're gonna get the work session going. On the agenda tonight, we've added public comment. And while that's item B, I'm gonna move that ahead and have public comment before we get into the work session. So is there anybody in attendance who would like to comment on the budget? Do not enroll, let's move on to the budget session.
Thank you, Mayor Kenny. I'm gonna do a, there were some questions asked at last week's work session and accounts meeting. We tried to address some of those questions for you here this evening. We had a slight kind of agenda for a work session, presenting with you, knowing that there'll be questions and such, and we may have to go back and refer to this throughout the meeting. But we'd like to cover tonight our budget assumptions, health insurance, additional officer, which received quite a bit of comment last week, the oil and gas fund, utility rate study, impact on the utility rate study on sprinkling meters, that was a question asked by council member Whitlock regarding that, we wanna make sure we address that, appropriation and council items. So, the intent for tonight was to do a brief presentation of city council, covering these particular items, and then going backwards and trying to make sure that we have provided you all the information you had requested. So, thank you. So, I'd like to get started with budget assumptions. There was a question that was raised as to how comfortable staff was with the assumptions that were used in the budget, so I just wanted to address that briefly. As the only budgets are based on a variety in what can come from revenue and expense, that's the nature of what a budget is. In our case, at least, particularly for the general fund, but for most funds, the revenues simply have less variables and are more predictable than what the expenses are, which have many more variables. Regarding expenses, the smaller administrative departments are much more predictable than the larger departments such as public works, which require, again, just because of the more variables they have. In preparing the budget, the staff and department directors use historical data, and we adjust that for additional information, expectations, and other variables to try to come up with the best possible budget estimates. It's not a perfect science, but we think it's worked very well in the past and feel like it will continue to work well. It is true, though, however, that as budgets are tight, and the city has had to be much more precise in its numbers, and being more precise means trying to really hone in on assumptions. That also does leave a little bit less margin for error, particularly if reality does not match expectations. For example, you could have assumed a two-person plan, and maybe that becomes a family plan in health insurance because of a happy occurrence during the year, or fuel price spikes higher than what we had anticipated because of geopolitical instability or perhaps a refinery going down. We just had a really harsh winter that can lead to things like more overtime. So, there's things that move up and down within a budget, but the budget's only as good as you print it, because as soon as you print it, an assumption will change or a variable will change, but it's the best snapshot at that piece of time. An example that we're gonna talk about tonight, that we've had some things we need to discuss, our health insurance, and we'll get into that a little bit later. But I think overall, we're comfortable with the numbers, no more and no less than we have in passion, we always try to do the best job we can in estimating what those budget things are gonna do. Health insurance, there's a fair number of slides regarding this, so please bear with me here. This is one of our major cost drivers, everybody knows that the cost of health insurance has been increasing much faster than general inflation, particularly in the United States, over the past, you know, decade and longer than that. We assume significant adjustments to employee health insurance as part of the budget proposal. We assume that we're going to move to a high deductible health plan with a health savings account, and from our current plan, which is a PPO provider option, which is wrapped with the state insurance in the range, right? That budget would shift significant costs onto the employees, but it would also provide tools to manage those costs and provide employees with a tax-advantaged savings vehicle through the health savings account. Currently, our health plan looks like this, and I don't wanna dwell on it, but basically, we buy a very high deductible plan because the cost is good, and then we reimburse it back down with a health reimbursement arrangement to have an effective deductible in this range. And then there's some copays on a lot of the things, but the bottom line is, right now for that plan, employees pay, let's say one person, two persons, or families, these amounts, so 462,000, 10, 17, 30, that's taken out of payroll reductions. The total cost, as we sit right now for our plan, and this is everything, it's health insurance, it's dental, it's vision, it's the reimbursement through the HRA, is the 679, 380, the city pays 15,000, employees pay about 63,000. And that is for both general fund employees and water and sewer employees. Our original estimate, when we were first preparing the budget back in mid-January, was that the 73 million was maybe a 33% increase. We have a cost-sharing formula in place with all of our unions that can apply to non-union employees as well, which says, city will absorb the first 5% in premium increases, employee absorbs the next 5%, the third 5% is split, and anything over 15% is considered catastrophic, and the city will pick that back up. However, since that formula was first crafted, the state law has changed, and legislature passed, and the governor signed into the law what's known as the hard cap, or Public Act 152, and it limits how much public employers can spend on health insurance, and it refers to premiums, reimbursements, and taxes. It does not impact dental and vision, that's not part of the law, but the others are. For 2014, that's the amount of the hard cap, the total amount that a public employer can play for the city, that the city can pay, based on these amounts, 58, 50, whatever, 614,000 with this split of employees. For state losses, we can't pay more than that. Another thing that really has impacted our health insurance, particularly starting January 1, are premium taxes, and it's had a very, very big impact. We've had two significant impacts with city health insurance since the passing of the Affordable Care Act. First was when individuals were allowed to keep their children on the plan until age 26. That was one of the early things that went on, and that cost the city approximately $20,000. And then in January, we had a huge increase in the premium tax, which, as of right now, currently costs about $32,000. That's an increase that wasn't anticipated in the budget, it's based on having to fund part of the Affordable Care Act and having to pay for the state Medicaid portion, which they decided to fund through a premium tax. That current cost is about $61 per month for the city. And the state legislature just recently said, well, that, those amounts also have to be included under the hard cap. So, when we got those 33% estimates, we calculated what this 555 formula would mean, and it would have made extraordinary increases for both the city and employees, ones that would probably not be acceptable by either party. The annual increase, for instance, on a family plan, and this is the increase, not the amount that they pay, would have been almost $3,000 per year, the annual amount would have raised that to 4,612. So knowing that this probably wasn't gonna be acceptable either to the city or the employees, we started looking at other plans when we were developing the budget. And what we came up with at for many meetings with our provider Cadillac Insurance was a different plan, and a different model, and a different carrier. So, going from Blue Cross Blue Shield to a consumer's mutual plan, going from a PPO to an HSA, and then also wrapping that with an HR, it was a very complex plan. And that would have had total health insurance costs of about 172,000 with this much built into the budget for city costs. So, going from the proposed plan to this plan saved about $80,000 a year, and that was built into the budget. However, when the actual increases came out, which were after the budget was delivered to city council, our health premiums only increased 15%. That's good news, right? It's better than 33%. We went back to our carrier to look at Blue Cross plans, 'cause that's the employee preference, if they can find a plan that works, they'll like to stay with that network. And we found a Blue Cross Blue Shield and a Delta demo plan that went to work within the budgetary framework. So, we changed to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, still moving from a PPO that we currently are on with a health reimbursement arrangement, to a high deductible health plan called a simple HSA, and then moving to Delta demo. We also wanted to consider moving our vision plan to a more limited vision benefit, but using some of that savings to implement some things that would help the employees manage their costs, consult a doctor, pricing transparency, and wellness. And this is what that new plan would look like. It has some HSA funding for the city, gives them a higher effective deductible with some copays afterwards, but it also includes these things, which we thought would help ameliorate some of the cost increase. What we want is a health savings account, and that's an account that becomes the employee's property, and they can roll it from year to year, you can put in pre-tax money, it's tax-free upon withdrawal for eligible medical expenses. So it provides employees a chance to, if they want to build up money for future, for retirement, or if they're frugal with it, and they have two good years and they have a bad year, they have money there that they can use that for. So we think that's a big improvement over the HRA, from the perspective of it becomes the employee's property and they treat it more like theirs and become more cost-conscious and more consumer. There may be a downside to that to employee, because currently the HRA wraps the entire amount of deductible beyond a certain amount. So this gives the employees more flexibility, but more exposure. But to help with that, we're proposing, we're proposing doing a teledoc, which allows employees to call 24/7 after they register, consult a doctor, that doctor can write prescriptions or form prescriptions, and can consult you, and save the trip to an ER, save the trip to your family physician, and really cut down on some of those costs. There's a program here, they call it A2CT, which stands for Additive Security, Consumers and Transparency and Accountability. Basically, it allows employees to do some consulting with our provider, do some price shopping, find out what different procedures cost, particularly electric procedures at different places, so they can try to save someone. And then there's also a wellness component to that. This is kind of a busy slide, but what I wanted to highlight was, this budget included the cost of 672,000, but the city cost was 535,000. When the actual renewal came in at that 15%, it had a cost of 751,000 with the city cost of 647, which is a lot more than what we had budgeted. And so this plan that I just talked about, which is the Blue Cross HSA, brings those costs more in line with what's in the budget. The impact of going to this, though, does increase the employee's amount to an annual amount of 2,900 for a family plan. We have been meeting with employers, both the non-union and the union, over the past few weeks, and also an employee healthcare group, which has representation from all employee groups. And understandably so, the employees are very concerned about those significant cost For a family, that 2,606 dollar increase, or above and beyond what they're paying now, and that doesn't include any impact on their prescription drugs, a lot of the stuff we can't determine, because we don't know what particular drug the employee uses, but in terms of premium costs and exposure to deductible, it's about 5.5% of the average full-time wages. And most of the employees really thought that that was a significant burden, and were very concerned about it. And you can see with this, currently, they're responsible for the first $500 of deductible, and they pay about $1740, the payable, about $2,240 for those two items. The actual renewal would have raised, the deductible would have been the same, would have raised that employee premium by about $1,100, up to this 3,300. With the new plan, that employee premium stays about the same, a little bit more, but you can see there's a lot more exposure potentially on deductibles, an additional $1,500. So, between the 1,500 and the 1160 here, I think that's where you get the 2,660. We have made many, many, many changes in our health insurance over the last 10 years. We've probably changed it five to six times. And employees have been really great partners with that, trying to navigate those kind of chop and waters. But this year, the employee consensus seems to be that the proposed changes are, have simply gone too far and shift too many costs on the employees. And the unions have pointed out that from 2008 to 2013, the general fund balance increased by almost $400,000. While at the same time, our employment here at the city dramatically decreased, their wages grew more slowly than they normally have, and employees are paying a lot more for their insurance. This chart just kind of illustrates that, this is what I'm talking about, that $400,000 increase in fund balance over this term period, and the number of employees have gone down over that same time period. That's nothing new, we've shown these charts before. The employee consensus from the union groups and the employee healthcare thing is that they would either like to see the current plan maintained, even with the increased employee cost, or would maybe consider the new plan if the cost in out-of-pocket impacts 50% or a little bit more. Their suggestions would be that perhaps the city could consider using a portion of the general fund and water and sewer fund balances to fill the gap on a short-term basis, because to their way of thinking, that's a rainy day fund, and it's a pretty rainy day, we really haven't had for over the last four years, and we've had these factors that are in the lines. They suggested maybe using levy part of the unleaded millage, or perhaps using the uncommitted portion of oil and gas income to help fund matters in the short term. Their thought is moving forward, hopefully revenue can rebound, health costs can moderate, and possible, I believe there could be savings through attrition. I think it's gonna be very difficult in the course of negotiations with the union groups to try to push through a plan that we had proposed, and Mitch can speak to that a little bit more, but that seems to be the consensus of the union groups. So, the reason I bring up the health insurance is simply because it's a pretty big budget assumption, it's not getting the traction we thought it might, we might have to recalibrate it out in a little bit, so that's why we brought that up. Moving on to the next topic is police officer. Previously, there's been a lot of discussion, even stretching back to last year, regarding concerns about officer safety, particularly in my, with one person I'm dealing with. Different ways to address that, that were previously discussed, were using reserve officers, possibly filling in with car time, filling in with overtime shifts, or maybe adding an additional officer. Public Safety Director Dave Bachman talked about this at length last work session. Previously, he had not requested additional staffing in the police department, didn't think the budget would support that. But in light of all the conversation that's been happening in the last couple of weeks, he conducted a very thorough review of, with the staff and himself, of the situation over the past few weeks. And I let him, you know, speak to this, but basically, he's concluded that the officer safety is compromised, but a lack of supportive backup underneath in the hours. We also looked at what the cost to employ another police officer would be, and we began to look at five years, broken into wages, overtime, fringes, uniform, training, agility, and then there's gonna be some hiring costs in year one. So, the total five-year cost for that is approximately 365,000 if you were to consider doing that. I'll let you guys take a look at that slide, guys and ladies, look at that slide for a little bit. There were some questions about what those costs were, and I just wanted to try to bring some transparency to that. Question would be, how would you pay for that? Well, there's some options to pay for an additional officer, you could, again, this is similar to what we talked about on the health insurance, is you use a portion of the fund balance in the general fund, rainy day fund, levy a little bit, or all the unleaded millage, 4,650, if you're talking about raise about $8,000 additional, use the uncommitted portion of oil and gas income, or achieve savings in the proposed budget, probably through a layoff.
But we could use a combination of all of these.
You could use a combination of all of that, so, yeah. Those are, those are, by any means.
Just one comment on that last chief savings by proposed budget layoffs. I'm totally against that. I don't, I don't wanna see anybody laid off in the city because of hiring another person in the police department.
I understand what you're saying. We can move forward without the, playing somebody.
Those are just options that council members have to support, and that's the reality of the budget situation, as has been pointed out many times, it's really been trimmed, at least in the general fund area, to where there isn't any other.
Our, our personnel is down, is trimmed way back, to the point now where it's, you know, getting hard to, to do a lot of, a lot of the work that's supposed to be done.
We wanna talk a little bit about the oil and gas fund, the city manager had an article in the paper, I just wanted to go into this again for the benefit of council, but also, quite frankly, for the benefit of the general public and people watching on TV too and people in attendance. There are some misconceptions about the oil and gas fund that we'd like to clear up. The wealth started producing in the early 80s, in six, in June of 81, ordinance chapter 40 was adopted, and that was the first oil and gas ordinance. And it established our oil and gas, and the ordinance that specified the oil income to be used for street improvements, which we've known, but we've never really tied it back in that ordinance, that's been the institutional knowledge. So, even back in the day that that was founded, those funds have never really been used for operational purposes, they've been used for various type of capital improvements, starting with street improvements. In November of 92, voters adopted a charter amendment protecting the oil and gas fund, and then in 95, the entire city ordinances, all of them, were recodified. And when the recodified ordinances were adopted, the oil and gas section removed any mention of streets. I think, I speculate, I don't know for sure, if, if council member Corey may remember this, this was when we were gearing up to do the sewer separation, I think they were thinking ahead that they needed to pledge those revenues for the bonds, which is what ultimately they could, that's what I speculate happened, I don't know that for sure, about doing more research. In the late 90s, we pledged the oil and gas income for support of water and sewer revenue bonds, and that was for the first few stages of the sewer separation. 2005, we started adjusting water and sewer rates to remove the need for the oil and gas contribution to the water and sewer fund, and to fund capital improvements instead, so kind of going back to what at the origin we started out at. In 2000, and I will say, the amount of money that was contributed to the water and sewer fund over those years was significantly in excess of the additional items that were funded that probably weren't allocable directly to water and sewer, such as maybe some street improvements that weren't absolutely necessary when they did the sewer separation project. With that said, the current ordinance that was adopted by council, when they adopted those bonds, if push comes to shove, those revenues still are pledged to the water and sewer fund. I don't ever anticipate that becoming an issue, but if something really catastrophic happened, just know that that ordinance is still in effect, or we adjusted rates as such to make sure that that doesn't happen. In 2008, state investment law changed and allowed oil and gas to be invested like a public pension fund. 2009, we selected investment, we adopted an investment policy for the fund, and also a spending rule for the fund, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. As of March 31st, 2014, accumulated royalties that the city has received since those wells started producing is 7.35 million. The market value of the fund is a little over 10 million. And that also does include internal loans to the marine and boat launch, which were approved by the oil and gas board, and also council is aware of. Those loans pay a 2% interest rate, so they're not an interest-free loan, and those loans are part of the portfolio of investments similar to a bond investment in a company that the, that the fund has. There's been some confusion, it was thought that that was maybe hidden, but that's simply not the case, everybody's aware of that. The fund has performed well since June of 2007, we've had an increase of 34%, and it's provided almost $2 million for city projects based on the spending rule. The investment performance since March of 2009 has set this fund up exceedingly well for the long term and to provide income for many future generations, and that's the whole idea of an endowment fund, is to have what's known as intergenerational equity. Can't spend too much now to shortchange the future generations, but you also don't wanna spend too little and have too much accrue to the future generation benefits. There's a whole body of literature that talks about that in the endowment field, and we think that we've struck the right balance with that. These charts show what the earnings have done since 2009, when we started investing in the markets, you can see we've got significant returns over those years, that's why the fund has grown 34%. And not all of those gains are cash, a lot of those are unrealized gains, or they're paper gains, because you don't, as soon as you have a gain in your stocks and that type of, you don't take those gains, it's designed for the long term. And you can see the oil and gas market value has just trended up. I wanted to talk about the investment policy and spending rule. This policy and everything that surrounds it was needed for the new type of investing that the fund entered into after the state law was changed, so it's gonna be invested in markets. It is gonna basically set up like an endowment fund, similar to what you find at a major university or a Manistow County Community Foundation. This policy was drafted and adopted by the oil and gas board, but under the advice of council and the agreement of the oil and gas board, it was thought, this is such an important policy to the city, that it needed to be ratified by city council as well. So every time that that policy, when it was first put into effect, and any changes that are approved by the oil and gas board have to be ratified by city council. And let's come back to council, let's talk about what they changed some things, primarily for asset allocation. The policy specifies that 4% of the trailing 12-quarter market value of the fund be available for spending, that's what the spending rule dictates. That 4% is very sustainable long term, in fact, we reduced it from 4.5%, maybe about a year and a half ago, a year ago, in recognition of the fact that our investment advisor and many other observers feel that the long-term returns on the equity and bond markets are gonna lag what they've been historically. So there's the thought that we should reduce that a little bit and make that fund more sustainable. And with the current allocation, which is roughly 65 equity, 35 fixed and cash, that is, should be sustainable. This just is an example of the calculation of how we do that, when we're calculating the amount of the spending rule, we take the 12-quarter market value, multiply it by For this year, it provides 358,543 in the proposed budget. The reason I had that start is when I was reviewing the budget documents, and I noticed that there was some inconsistencies in this amount, this is the proper amount, but it actually shows up as 345,000 in some places. I'm responsible for that, but I'd like to think if I had had Michelle taking a second look at my budget, those kinds of mistakes wouldn't have happened. This is actually a conservative, the mistake is conservative, because the capital improvement fund only shows 345 coming in rather than the 358, which it actually is, so, there's about $13,000 in additional revenue that's gonna be available to the capital improvement fund this year, we have about 60.
That would take us from a price of like 55,000 available funds to 68,000 in a particular area.
There's additional revenue there. The capital improvement fund commitments are 290,000 this year and 68,000 extra. We had only budgeted 55,000 for capital projects, so that's how we thought we had initially at 68. The oil and gas, we really enjoy a bull market since the market declined in 2009, it's pretty much gone, up, 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 up. In fact, the S&amp;P 500 hit record highs, the downward record highs. But markets do go down, we've talked about this a lot, the oil and gas board, as the American tests do, and American workers, there's anything that has to, there's some risk there, there's market risk any time they're in the market. For this upcoming meeting, which is gonna be on Friday, the investment advisor myself prepared a sensitivity analysis to show what the impact on that fund would be under different market scenarios. And the bottom line is, without going into the details, the fund is very resilient the way it's set up currently, and sustained given a significant drop. But, the caveat there is only if we do not cap investments beyond what the spending rule would imply. That is what, the combination of amount of money in the market that's invested, which is basically all 10 million, combination of that, the asset allocation, and the 4% spending rule is what makes that fund resilient and sustainable. If you change any of those equations, then it has some impacts. Moving on to the water and sewer rate study.
Could we, just a question.
Sure.
On page 96 of the oil and gas, the beginning fund balance is 9,000, or 9,609,000 and change, and the accumulated royalty balance is 7,500,000 and change, there's a difference of 2,108,000.
Correct.
Now, there's been some talk about tapping part of that, and you and I had discussed that this afternoon, if we tapped any, any of that difference, it would affect the, it would affect the bottom line, is that correct?
It, it would, that, that type of activity is, I would say, 100% inconsistent with what, the way the fund has been set up, with all the work that's been done since 2007, really, to try to move this towards an endowment fund. It, it does have impacts, depending, depends on how much of that money is taken out, but any, any amount taken out does have impacts on the average of the market, there's less money in the market working to generate those returns, and it's accumulative effect over time, because, you know, compound interest, Einstein said, that's the biggest miracle in the world, it just compounds on itself. So it does, it does have, it does have impacts to what we've talked about in terms of.
Would have an impact on that 4% spending rule then?
Well, it, it wouldn't have an impact on the 4% spending rule, but what it would say is there'd be less money earning gains to be, that 4% spending rule would be applied to, and therefore it would reduce that amount theory over time.
Basically, that 3098 that we have this year could be 200,000 that year.
Yeah, if you took 200, people, 2 million dollars out of that fund to spend on whatever building project might be, they would have a significantly negative impact on the ability for that fund.
And you'd never make that up.
And, and the key thing to remember is, and again, it was, it was fortuitous timing. We started We started dollar cost averaging, as CDs rolled off our portfolio into the market at the trough of the market, hence the day, to the day, the trough of the Dow. And we've ridden that curve all the way up to today. And, and the sensitivity analysis that oil and gas board's going to look at on Friday shows that because of that, we're able to weather, the worst-case scenario, we, we assumed a twenty-five percent equity decline in one year, with the rest of this year, a ten percent equity decline, and we still only cut off our spending by maybe about thirty thousand dollars. So it's very resilient, even in modesty terms, or small downturn, because of the averaging, those funds either grow pretty significantly or maintain. And that's really critical if you're trying to fund different things. So anyway, we just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Water and sewer rate study, we've hinted at this slide before, we are required by law and ordinance to levy rates sufficient to service that out like a system and maintain the system. We've always conducted that internal rate process as part of the budget, we talked about that, and we commissioned a professional rate study this year for a variety of reasons. The budget is going to be prepared using that internal rate, but it was always intended to parallel the result of the rate study. And now the rate study has been presented both with the stakeholders and the city council last week, and I know there was a lot of information, he also wanted to take some time to digest that. Staff's feeling is that the rate structure proposed has advantages of the current programs. First and foremost, is because we've never done a professional rate study, but beyond that, the process is very transparent, in accordance with industry-accepted standards and practices all across the country. It's much more equitable in our current program to all user classes, and it's, it provides for sustainability for the water and sewer utility, which is necessary to do this. You have to be sustainable to do this. And right now, we're servicing debt and we're operating a system, but our funds aren't really adequate to maintain the system, hence the need to always go out and do bond when we have big projects coming up. The new rate structure, over time, moves us away from that model, and lets us fund our depreciation, so we can make the necessary repairs and maintenance as we move forward.
And just a reminder, if you remember, the rate study that was discussed last week, we need to be investing a little over a million dollars a year annually into our utility system to maintain our system properly.
The budget with our internal rate making process assumed a nine percent increase, and the ordinance requires, if we look at that in terms of impacts on a typical six thousand gallon, that's what the ordinance requires. That user, in this case, would have a bill of seventy-three thousand, thirty-three cents per month, which is an increase of a little over six dollars per month, or about seventy-three dollars per year. Under the rate study, the proposed structure and, and rate levels of the rate study proposed, that typical user would have a bill of seventy dollars and forty-two cents, as opposed to seventy-three, thirty-three, which would be an increase of about three dollars per month, or thirty-seven dollars, thirty-eight dollars per year. So for the typical user, that we kind of use as the rule of thumb to gauge rate impacts, the, the proposed rate study would actually be a decrease for that. This chart was prepared by Burton Associates and shows what the impact is at different levels of use. And because the rate study proposes shifting more of the cost onto a fixed monthly charge, known as a ready-to-serv charge, uh, it does have a little bit of a disproportionate impact on the lower volume user, but it's not, it's not a huge impact. So for instance, somebody who had no usage, well, if you had somebody who was out of, out of the state for a whole year, um, right now, they would only pay six dollars and sixty cents per month for their fixed bond that charge. Their bill would go up by eighty-seven dollars a year. If you had somebody who used two thousand gallons, they would see an annual increase of seventy dollars compared to twenty-three, seventy-six, which is less than fifty dollars a year, it's roughly four dollars a month for somebody with two thousand gallons of usage. And as you recall, and Vernon mentioned, the typical thing that you see with a ready-to-serv charge is that you recover one hundred percent of your, what they call extra capacity costs. They only use, set that at fifty percent, because they wanted to be, in this terms, mindful of the impact, and so they step, quite frankly, to the customers.
Question. What, what do you mean, firm capacity and technical capacity?
That would be a good question for Mr. McCullough, I don't feel qualified to answer that. When it's looked at in the A W W A rate manual.
All right, and I believe that, that point where you said, well, it's not a bad issue.
They, they look at, they look at peak day, peak hour, peak month, that's part of their calculation, how they use them. Staff's recommendation would be to proceed with the new rate structure and levels established by the rate study, and then incorporate that into the budget per council approval and the budget approval. And that's doable, but we need to start on that sooner, I've got to get the information from Andy. Andy is waiting on preparing the final report, because he wanted to see if there was any input on council, if there needed to be anything that we needed to tweak or talk about, so he hasn't done that yet. But we do need to decide, you know, how we're going to organize that. Councilmember Whitliffe had asked a question, well, what is the impact on people with sprinkling meters? Uh, water users right now have no ready-to-serve, so that six dollars and sixty cent charge is only for sewer users. Our current budgeted water rate, uh, proposed budgeted water rate is three dollars and seventy cents per thousand gallons. The state, that, this rate that came out of the rate study was two dollars and fifty-two cents per thousand gallons, and most people, according to Heather, who's doing part of five eighths meters, so that ready-to-serv charge is three fifty-seven per month. I asked Heather to pull some typical volumes of people that use sprinklers. Somebody who's fifty-eight thousand gallons, their old cost was two fifteen, their new cost was a dollar eighty-nine, so they have a twenty-six percent decrease. Across the board, it's a twenty-six dollar annual decrease. Across the board, the impact on the sprinkling meter users is less. And that makes sense, because the water and sewer rates, because now it's got a ready-to-serv charge, which is a fixed component effect, that lowers the rates, and sprinkling users typically use a big volume. This particular customer puts a lot of water on their lawn, so they, but this is a very unusual amount. These are much more typical amounts here. And again, that assumes a five eighths and two eighths, which is the pretty standard for sprinkling. So the answer to that question is, for the typical sprinkling meter user, they would see a reduction in their cost, whether this is even possible. I had some clarification that we needed on the appropriations. As recall, the two-one-one request, um, when they first submitted it was twenty-five-hundred, when they submitted the paperwork after the budget was repaired, they had asked for three thousand, so we need to deal with that. The budget has twenty-five-hundred built in. Peg had requested, um, last year was twenty-five-five, their letter said, we'd like to keep it the same as last year at twenty-six thousand, so I was a little bit perplexed, like, call of keep, and he's like, oh, that's better than twenty-six, the manager recommended twenty-five-five. We just need to determine what funding level council would like to see for those. And that's really all that we have prepared, um, trying to address some of the big issues and the questions, and we'll, I guess, up for council discussion, unless you have anything
Again, we're trying to address all the questions that council had mentioned, and looking forward, going to oil and gas as a discussion, until the rate study was going to be a discussion on it. So is the reason we incorporate that into that discussion.
I guess on the health insurance, I would like to see maybe something, uh, in our, taken out of our fund balance. I think the union and the non-union have taken a hit for quite a number of years now, raises and things like that, and I'd like to, I'd like to help them out with the health insurance, health insurance in some way.
My question is, what will we do next year? Will it double?
Well, I think we can take a look at it next year, but for this year, if the union agrees with it or the non-union, you know, let's, uh, let's give them something this year, and next year, let's take a look.
It's like, I don't want to place a undue hardship on anyone, but we also have to look at the fact that these will increase next year again, and it's going to double.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you, but our fund balance is quite healthy, and I'd like to see them, uh, you know, give them a half percent raise, and, and they're going to be paying another two percent for health, or three percent out of their, out of their paycheck.
I agree, and I think one of the things we've discussed before is, one of our ability to be, uh, to whittle down our departments and, and be efficient was the skill and expertise and the years of experience we have in a lot of those positions, and we whittle away some of their benefits and, and their employment experience, and we lose them. And being concrete, something in that, that, you know, who doesn't have those qualifications and can't be as efficient, and can't be as productive, and I, I, I agree, I don't want to whittle away those benefits, I don't want to whittle away that experience that they have to a point that we start losing those, those good employees. So I'm, I'm with Bob in that, and so we're kind of trying to find a way to, to keep, if we say our employees are our biggest asset, we got to start investing in that, in that respect, so.
This is very true.
I also agree with that, and this afternoon, I was talking to Mr. Ed, and we were throwing around a bunch of ways to kind of finance everything, and I guess I, I can't quite remember everything, but I thought we had a little money in a, in the oil and, oil and gas that we could allocate to some of the... We were blending the police, uh, the health insurance, and, um, what else was it? We had three, three items that we were blending, and, um, you had one responded, oh, I know, on, on the, if we go for a new policeman, that we would not ask for the total, um, was that forty, forty?
Point, point.
Four point five bills or something like that, that we could allocate some of that, and somehow we had all three working out pretty, pretty good. And that's, that's what I support, I, you know, support the guys, and let's get the councilboard and see where it goes after two years, let's, you know, got to do what you got to do.
I think there's two issues here, I think. We talked about the additional police officer, which was the reason we wanted to make sure, and the reason I asked David to kind of lay it out for five years is because, I believe you've been saying too bad, um, that is the timeframe from an officer starting until it reaches its, its, its maximum steps, and I see Jeff back there too, so.
Normally, we hire a police officer just for one, one year, that's, that's not even a realistic investment. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it for the long haul.
So you need to see what that, what that...
I appreciate that, I do.
Going forward, and you notice that some of those costs will decrease, some of those costs will increase, you know, the training, your agility, you know what that is? Every year they have annual agility, that really can perform and be rewarded for that, so, again, we wanted to just show that obviously, a large number, and, and the uniform, obviously that's the upfront capital cost, for an officer coming out, the uniform, the belts, the search weapons and the things of that nature, so we wanted to lay that out. So the, the two items really are health insurance and the additional officer, unless I'm missing something. I think we counted, I think you counted officer twice on your count. So what we're talking about, we know that council had discussed the need for a new officer, we know the cost of that new officer, this year coming up is approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. It was our goal to lay out some options for you if you wanted to do that. We know that the point four six five five mil generates approximately eighty thousand dollars. One mil generates a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. One mil generates one seventy-seven, so you, you have that option. We wanted to be mindful of our, of our partners, uh, the P O M, C O M, I A F F, the steelworkers, and, um, and showing, them identifying, really where that fund balance has increased also, so we want to be mindful of that this evening, and make sure that we show that record. Yes, sir?
If we have a full-time staff, will we go in part-time with a police officer?
Say that again, please.
We've got a budget of fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars for a part-time staff, police officer. If we go full-time, we wouldn't be hired, we wouldn't, would we be filling that part-time position?
Is there any question?
For the reception.
The part-time reception, that police officer, the part-time, right, twenty-hour person staff.
Okay.
That's a great question. So the, the options, they're, and you noticed, not surprising, that the options are pretty much all the same for each, same, you can talk about, there's a limited number of tools that you can draw from.
And we know how much it would, uh, an officer would cost.
We do.
And how much would the public service cost?
We, we believe that the cost is approximately eighty thousand dollars.
It would be, it wouldn't be that full impact of the general fund, and part of that, uh, Mary Ford concern, I would have to kind of go back and start tweaking the numbers, because there's been a lot of different variables on the health insurance, that's what might work, but I think, I think the bottom line is, many of the employees would suggest that, hey, we would like to stay with the current plan, and we would even pay the increased rate per the, per the, um, pay the increased rate on this actual renewal, pay these increased rates for the caution, but the problem is, that brings in the city cost at six forty-seven, where we had only budgeted five thirty-five. So I would like to get somewhere in between these two numbers. So there's a difference here of about a hundred and, um, twelve thousand, but not all of that is general fund dollars, some of that's water and sewer fund dollars, because there's about eighty-five percent, eighty-four percent of it's general fund, sixty percent of it's water. So I'd like to get somewhere in between here and come up with something that works. It's administration's belief that we do need to move away from the P P O plan that's wrapped up in H R A, though, and move to an H S A plan with some of those tools, but perhaps fund that at a little bit higher level, so that the exposure to the deductible isn't so much. Because right now, even though we've tried to introduce consumerism, which is all the rage in healthcare, trying to get people to be more accountable, nobody spends somebody else's money like they spend their own money. And H S A is the employee's property. So if they know that this is their money, and, and it's there, they're like, I'm spending my money, if we can fund that at an appropriate level, we can foster that consumerism, help set them up for catastrophic things down the road, because they can also contribute to it in the state of course retirement, but also reduce the uncertainty to the city's budget, because right now, when we, when we have an H R A model, I don't know how much I'm going to be, I'm not, I don't know how much I'm going to pay in that at the end of the year. I have actuarially determined rates that say, we think you're going to pay this much. But if I've got a bunch of employees that have a really bad year, I pay more, and if I've got a bunch of employees that have a really good year, I pay less. And that causes us some difficulty when we're trying to comply with the heart gap. So an H S A-type plan gives certainty to the city, gives certainty to the employees, fosters consumerism, and I think is the way, quite frankly, that the Affordable Care Act and many, many organizations, both public and private, are starting to push their employees. So I'm not saying that we can negotiate that with the unions, that's all got to get worked out, but I think if we can make the costs be similar and, and show some of the benefits that would be with an H S A, that I'm going to be able to get there. But so I think the cost is going to be somewhere between these two numbers overall for the city, and we'll try to make that...
You're saying possibly a ninety thousand dollar increase cost to the city itself?
Uh...
On top of six...
I think that's probably on the outside.
On top of sixty-six, so...
Eighty, maybe?
Yeah. So resulting in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars totals for a police officer and that.
I would say that would be the high end of that.
And you said eighty-two thousand if you used all of our...
It's approximately fifty thousand dollars for a point four six five five.
So we have to find another sixty, that would be the excess in the oil and gas fund?
Well, you could, you could, you could use general fund balance as a rainy day. You could use the uncommitted portion of oil and gas revenues that are transferred via the spending rule.
That's the sixty-eight thousand, right.
Which is right now thirteen thousand, but we, but we, we budgeted...
We'll be showing that illustration. Well, that's pulling that illustration up, I want you, I want you to see what, again, just remind you as to what was in that, when it was fifty-five thousand dollars, what was actually there in the budget that we had been discussed, so we're, we're perfectly clear on that.
Would you repeat that, what?
Sure, let, let me, let me get to that slide.
We just wanted you to be clear as to, if you would have used those committed, uncommitted funds, what, what would be removed out of the budget for this year coming up? So it's...
Well, I see the fifty-five thousand.
Right, so I had thirteen on top of this, you got sixty-eight roughly.
Right.
But those are the areas that we have committed, not committed, excuse me, because you can uncommit, that we had proposed to you to be included into this fiscal year budget.
The Rotary Park, now it's got, that's really... We'll get that in the committed segment, it was just a carryover from the last year. The rest of that is things that are, um, you know, more discretionary.
Due to the city, discretionary to the city, right. So, Unused Village, fund medals, capital improvement, um, that, those funds right there, we've been cleared tonight, at least, a lot of council's been cleared tonight, not to go back and look at it through, uh, employee head council, other areas, so, um, those are the primary areas where we believe that there, you can make those decisions from. You also have the opportunity, if you choose to, to look at appropriations. Appropriations are completely within your, uh, your discretion, they always have been included within council discretion. I think every single one of the, um, you know, those entities, appropriations provide a meaningful service to the citizens of Manistee at some degree or another, whether it be the M R A and U Sports, or, uh, the Veterans Council and Veterans Remortgage. All of those, uh, provide meaningful and useful benefits to the residents of Manistee. But having said that, those are within your discretion and control.
So if we eliminate the Rotary Park playground, that would eliminate the grant that we put in, in for it too, wouldn't it?
So if we eliminate the Rotary Park playground, that would eliminate the grant that we put in, in for it too, wouldn't it?
It makes my life harder in finding out how to come up with those funds because we have committed to that grant and that was the sidewalk match.
Sure.
For that particular grant. And I think, again, I think that one needs to be slipped up to the committed, honestly, because we've applied for the grant, we'll be bringing you, um, you haven't, you haven't accepted a grant yet because the federal government hasn't given us the grant for you to subject. They've informed us that we're gonna be, receive that grant, but we have not received the formal documentation. We're hoping to have that to you by mid-June, early July at the earliest.
So we don't even consider that because it should be uncommitted?
Yeah, probably.
I believe that should be up there.
But that still leaves, that still drop that total annual expenses to forty-five.
The wayfinding signage is to continue the wayfinding signage program, replacing signage primarily at parks, to be honest with you. Uh, whether that be MAC Park, I mean, where you still have some of the old, old signs. Sands Park, MAC Park, upgrading those signs. Fire department door and opener, that was a pre-deficiency issue. That's for the new back door that we put in for, um, the new MAC five, I believe, ninety-five. Um, Rotary Park with that, they've each improved as we discussed that on, on multiple occasions. And I figure that was been discussed.
One, one just kind of dwell, kind of.
What are we talking about? Question. I'm lost here. I thought we were, I thought we had three sources that we could pull some extra money from.
Fund balance?
Okay.
Capital improvement, which you're looking at right now?
Okay.
Millage.
And the millage. And the millage, right.
One, one comment on this oil and gas fund is, to the degree that we've researched it and we haven't done an exhaustive search, but we've done quite a bit. Those funds have never been used for anything other than streets or water and sewer infrastructure or recently, since two thousand and five, other types of capital projects. And you can see, first street bond, that's a portion of that bond, so there's, there's some money still going to streets on that. Moving to use that operationally would be a significant shift from what we've done in the past. I'm not saying that's good, bad, or whatever. I'm just saying it's a significant shift from what we've done since nineteen eighty-one with this fund. It's, it's funded different types of capital improvements, but it's never funded operationally.
I don't think it has either.
I think that's not.
Might, might have.
And all the increases that we're talking about here are permanent increases. And so if we're gonna fund these, we need to find a way to fund these for the long term. And if we find to keep dipping into the general fund, I don't think that's.
Not long term.
A long-term solution. If we use the capital, it goes against.
Spending policy.
The spending policy and it does not move us further in trying to fund some of these capital projects that we need. As part of our strategic goals is to have quality of life. If we want people to move here, we also have to make sure we maintain quality of life.
I see the only, the only possibility is that for point four six five five, uh, for a police officer, for a police officer. Because if you use, if you use the fund balance, that's, that's a quick fix. You know, because next year, are we gonna have, uh, have, you know, are we gonna be able to fund it out of the fund balance next year, the year after, the year after?
But what is that, the health care, the health insurance?
Again, we, we talked about a full-time. What about if we hired a part-time officer? What does that help?
I don't have anything important.
Can you, can you address the, how a, how part-time officers would impact, is it probably going with a full-time officer? We look at part-time officers.
We may should hire part-time officers. Historically, when I brought the private police out as part-time officer, they were already trained and certified and they could go to work immediately. They knew our system, they had standard corporate software, worked on our court, knew our streets, so I could put them to work right away. A new part-time officer typically is someone that in Canada needs to be certified. You bring them out, we have to do the tactic and, and we have to certify them and outfit them in paper uniforms and that kind of stuff. And they'll be working only part-time. The first chance they get for a full-time job, they leave because they're much more marketable the minute I give them certification. So basically, we're prepping one of two and three or four thousand bucks for a person to make them marketable to anybody who wanted them. So for me, it's not a solution that, I just can't get purpose part-time employees. And we're in a market like, Grand Rapids or happening, a lot of other agencies have a lot of cops wanting to work part-time. They're already cops that want to work part-time to suffer their income, which might go either around the situation.
Thank you.
Is anybody retiring? Is anybody retiring? Does this them within, like, say, like, two years, we're waiting, funding for two years? And then when somebody retires, don't hire him? And that, that should be a wash right there.
Well, again.
Huh? Generally, it doesn't seem to work. Well, I'm not saying that I'm gonna tell them to get their funding together. I don't.
But if we think we're at the bottom balance of.
You save, you save a little bit between, you save a little bit between starting salary, ending salary, but you can lose that if you're, you have a two-person health insurance plan, the new person coming on board has a family plan. You can, you can save a little bit if you lose that. I think one of the things that we are going to be doing this year, Councilman McCoby, is taking a firm look at, looking at an attrition plan to the city, looking at opportunities to see where we can do that, see if there are opportunities for cost savings. Are there opportunities also for privatizing some of the service levels that we're providing? Can we get a acceptable level of service, either the same level of service or acceptable level of service in different, um, departments through privatization and achieve some saving, savings that way? So we're going to be looking through all of those things over the next twelve months. Maybe more than the last twelve months, the next nine months. Just getting those opportunities, trying to set ourselves up for future budgets. So if that is going to occur, we just could not incur and parallel right now with what we had going on with the budgets. You know what I think is going on.
Because with, with the current budget, it looks like we are projecting a drop in the general fund balance with the, the budget that was proposed.
Correct. Because we have sixty thousand dollars funded for the Ramizal Theater Director, which was a three-year commitment. And we have twelve thousand dollars budgeted for, um, continuation of paramedic training. If we get a local revenue sharing board granting that, then that'll go away. But if we don't, we need to make sure that it's backed.
So we're already budgeting.
Seventy-two thousand.
For this year. And then we also impacting the next two years, a drop in the general fund by sixty thousand.
And one thing to keep in mind, last year, we had, last year, we had a, a fifty-three thousand dollar decline in the general fund. A lot of that, though, was for tax appeal, the high attorney costs made, it's good to make some payback with the package. But that was not entirely the cause of that, but largely. Typically, as, as this chart shows, um, we've, we've grown that fund balance since, the two declines here were not as a result of operational losses. This, this decline, the decline here, this decline here. It partially was, but the bulk of that was from transferring money over the twenty percent fund balance policy to the capital improvement fund. Since that time, we've been able to build that back up, like I said, by about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. The, what typically happens in a typical year without extraordinary things is that the budget's will, some will come in over, some will come out, but we, we in the past have been able to add to that fund balance. I'm not saying that's gonna happen this current fiscal year. I'm not saying it'll happen in the proposed budget. But I think in general, if you look at the history of our fund balance, it's been pretty stable. We've not had gigantic operating losses in the general fund fund balance, or in the general fund just because the budget's been prepared in a conservative fashion. And I think that, that trend hopefully will continue. But, you know, there are, like we said, variables that are, you know, unknown at times.
So basically, what you're saying, you could tap that for a little bit and still keep it strength or pretty steady in it. Correct.
But we already have it tapped. We've already have agreements in place for the next three years to, everything being equal, it's going down by another hundred and twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars at the end of the three years.
She's correct.
So we've already looked at that, made some decisions based on, we felt comfortable decreasing the general fund for that particular.
I still think we could tap our fund balance, go do it for health insurance. And see if the union will agree to at least for a year or two and then see what happens.
I say we can make four, four. And tap half for like two years and see what we can. If we give something, the union will give something. Maybe we can get down to a large or general cost for each one.
So let's, let's separate them out, each limit to a primary. So the feeling on the additional police officer?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure she asked among everyone. That's my only point of staying there.
I think we made that clear.
I, 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 not from where I'm sitting over here, Kelly. And that's why I'm asking you.
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So I get the majority of that. I just wanna make sure that. Just the next is the health insurance.
Have all four given something to the union, unions and non-union health insurance?
I think we should toe-ball. Like, maybe not, not at all, but let's, let's find a happy medium.
They have given up a lot in the last two, three years.
And I have to agree that I don't see where we can do a hundred percent. If we could, even ninety percent, if that would be helpful.
All right. Before we move on to the help, if this council's approving a headcount to the police department, how are we gonna fund that?
That's it.
That was my next question.
Do you have one?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm bored with funding.
I think the increase that four, point four seven, five, five.
If you want that headcount from here on out, we need to resolve it with a permanent solution. And always tapping the general fund is not a permanent solution.
But I think the millage could be.
Yes.
Millage is what you gotta do for, for a policeman.
The millage will help. And you also said there was a thirteen thousand dollar error. So if you add that thirteen thousand, that.
You've got.
Substitutes it in a positive direction.
You've got approximately, if you levy the full amount, that would get you eighty-two thousand, three hundred dollars, rough numbers for that. So that would, here are the police officers, sixty-six thousand, four. So that would give you an average of approximately sixteen thousand dollars.
Add the thirteen from the.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And take out the wayfinding signs.
Again, are we making a policy change in how we.
Oh, that's right.
Spend those capital, capital improvement. So what you can do is there's something within the general fund that really could be considered capital improvement. Where we reduce the capital improvement, thirteen thousand on the general fund and move that into the capital improvement fund for that thirteen thousand. Because you really wanna start moving. If this is truly what we wanna do, then we need to start finding items within the general fund that may be a one-time purchase that we're looking at in this coming budget year. Move that as a capital improvement type so we can continue to fund those. But we still have a deficit, even at that, to make up the health insurance.
And the entire budget is based on the water and sewer adjustments already, correct? There's, there's gonna be no additional benefit from inserting any deeper data for that, or that's worth that, right?
The revenue, the revenue model that was put together in the great study, parallel the.
They call it.
That we put together, it generates the same amount of revenue as with the different structure. We could piece together some things to help address the health insurance potentially by doing three things. And one would be, if council trust levy the full amount of levy millage, there'd be a little bit left over there additionally. There'd be some potential money available. There's a contingency line item in the, in the general fund budget. I think we've got a twenty-seven thousand, but that was knowing that all of the union contracts were coming forward. So that's, that's part of why that money's in there for this sort of thing. So there's some of that money that could be, that could potentially be capped. And there's also then, you know, the remainder, depending on how we can make the numbers work and manipulate them and come to an agreement with your play groups, you might be able to then reduce the amount that you could have in the general fund balance, maybe to two hundred and fifty thousand, really rough numbers. Look at that, see what happens. And if we go, you know, what we could do. I don't believe, and I'd have to go back and review the general fund budget in detail. I don't believe there's any really big capital items that are, um, in the general fund budget that could be moved to the capital improvement fund. The only thing I keep, that I, that comes to mind is we budget about, I think it's five thousand dollars this year per year for just a miscellaneous variety, computer server-type infrastructure, things in this room and the downstairs replacements. I mean, but typically, that might be a switch that costs seven hundred dollars or maybe a battery backup that costs a thousand dollars. It's not typically gonna need that five thousand dollar threshold, it's normally little things. One year, we had a server that we lost, that cost more than that, so that might not have been a full of the budget. But by and large, as part of the budget balance and that's had to occur over the last six years, most of those items that typically need capital projects have been, been into the capital improvement fund already. The one exception to that is, is that the general fund pays a bond issue for this facility out of, out of tax dollars, operating tax dollars. Council wanted to ship some of that, burn it over to the capital improvement fund. They could do that and have free operating dollars as well. But that's really the only, without, without a review that I can, that I can think of is, uh, big capital item because most of all are definitely dollars, you know.
What we could do is, based upon the direction the council's given tonight, which is what we needed, is we have another meeting tentatively scheduled for the twenty-ninth, which is next Tuesday. This would be a head-and-eye opportunity to go, um, meet with various groups and work on these particular options which you have discussed this evening and come back with you and provide more further information based upon some feedback of information. I think that's really what we need. I think I have an understanding of where you're at. I don't really lose consensus on where you're all at, which is normal when you have seven different council members. Makes perfect sense. But I think we have pretty good direction. That's the one we talked about tonight. And we can go back and start working through some of those particular issues.
We could get some direction on those two little appropriation items where they're still in our.
You can also use the water.
Send the water.
So the appropriations, if we could go back to that, please. Thank you, right on the screen.
I still believe that PEG, there's one that got twenty-five thousand dollars last year because they were buying, or the others, was because they wanted to buy thirteen thousand dollars worth of something.
No, the reason we requested the grant from Indians was to replace a server that was breaking down.
PEG has received two local revenue sharing boards that have been through the city.
Last year.
No, they received, they received one last year and they received one several years before that. But I think their increase, Keith Kirk, didn't it go from like twenty-four to twenty-six? I could look back at the bodies, I don't recall. Within the last few years, it went up a little bit.
Two thousand and thirteen was twenty-four, actually.
I thought those was last year.
It was twenty-five, five last year.
For this coming, yeah, for this year, the budget was twenty-five, five, the year before it was twenty-four.
That was those fifteen hundred dollars. So maybe that's what we refer to in this figure. I know that they, I think that, and they were, they were sizable, sizable, matching the local revenue sharing board.
In these two appropriations, we're talking a total of a thousand dollars.
Yes. But by the state, no, we're.
Yeah, we're pretty frugal. They don't waste anyone.
Absent saying anything, wherever they are in the budget.
I just.
That's where, that's where I'm at. I mean, absent council direction.
Just to get off the, the subject of the budget a little bit.
Sure.
There's a misconception among some people in the community that the city of Manistee receives a pilt payment from the casino.
Let's talk about that, just really briefly.
How would like that?
We, we have, we have been an incredible beneficiary of the local revenue sharing board since it was initiated. Because before I got here, I think fifteen years, maybe, there was an article. There was an article on Dennis Berkowitz. Dennis is a long-serving member with Manistee Township. We've only had two serving members from the city of Manistee. The serving members from the city of Manistee were living shales, married for ten shales for many years, many years. And Mayor Kenny has served for six, seven?
Nine.
Nine, wow. So a long time. So Mayor Kenny has served. So we've only had two. The city of Manistee has always been the third most impacted local unit of government. The local revenue sharing board compact between the Louisville Van of Ottawa Indians and the state of Michigan provides for two percent, I guess, class three gaming revenue.
Basically, the stop machines.
Yeah. Stop machines, class three gaming revenue, two percent to go in. That is distributed based upon the local revenue sharing board compact. The first required twelve and a half percent of the distribution goes to public safety. Twelve and a half percent. That's the minimum amount. They can give more than that, but that's the minimum amount that goes toward public safety. The next is reimbursing those communities, those entities which would be receiving ad valorem taxes. They receive a payment in lieu of taxes. So let's see. So that would include Manistee Township, Manistee County, Manistee area public schools, West Shore Community College. I'm going to miss someone. Manistee Township. ISB, thank you very much. Yeah, all the voted villagers. They all get a portion of what they were getting if that was a fully taxed ad valorem facility. The next category is.
The city is not one of those.
The city is not one of those.
Yes.
Thank you very much. It is simply because the property is located in Manistee County and Manistee Township of Manistee County. It's not located in the city of Manistee. It's five miles north of us, or however the jurisdiction is. Offset grants is the next category. I'm not sure you've ever given an offset grant.
No, we never have. There's only been two or three since I went down the.
Those just, those just aren't given. And then the other category is the big nebulous other municipal projects. In the city of Manistee, for example, twenty-five thousand dollars for the, for Street Peach House. Next number of dollars for upgrades of the teen center. I'm going to miss some along that.
Yeah, the teen center, the baseball field.
And the Reef Park, including two grants to the ice station, too, for capital upgrades to their system. So the reason that the city of Manistee does not receive pilt dollars is it's not located within the city of Manistee. Having said that, I believe that the last count, we had just reached a million dollars in local revenue sharing board grants. Everything else?
The total is one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand cents, which is a significant amount of money, particularly for the police and fire departments. They have the required really necessary equipment that they wouldn't otherwise have without the grants.
So it's kind of very valuable. Plus all the other grants.
Just wanted to make it clear that the city of Manistee does not receive pilt payments.
And so the water rates is the next.
Well, the appropriations I'm here believing until this.
Okay.
So the, the question is really how would council like to proceed on the water and sewer rate study? The consultant does not yet prepare the final report, but absent any significant changes that council proposed, the stakeholders did not have any. That would be what is in the report. So the information that was presented last week would be the information that was in the report. And again, it's staff's recommendation that that rate structure and the level of the rates be incorporated into the budget that's going to be adopted under.
So the recommendation was eight point five percent. We have the budget recommendation of nine percent.
Yes, but it's a, it's a different, the, the recommendation, we had, the way we applied the rates is nine percent in the rate structure. They're, they're predating an eight point five percent increase in total revenue, but as you can see, the, which is basically the same.
Just what you expect.
Yeah. And the impact on the customers is what we showed on this chart.
And the variable impact on the customer.
Right there. And that's why that's really pretty critical, though, to the thing. But the other thing that the rate study does is it's, if we don't adopt that, then we need to go back to our, our partners in Manistee Township and Father Township with the negotiations and kind of figure out how we're going to negotiate with them. That's one of the reasons we did the rate study. That doesn't mean council has to adopt it, but I think the takeaway from this is we have higher transparency, we have sustainability, and we have it done professionally, and it basically validates what we've been doing. It just puts a different, puts a different package, puts a different value on that.
Have we, have you heard any feedback, either, or the Manistee township on the rate study?
What I'll say to that, Councilman, is, is that we are actively working to schedule meetings with both Manistee Township and Father Township to discuss this particular rate study. We really need to make sure the council is willing to adopt that before we have those meetings scheduled. But once that occurs, we'll be meeting with those individuals and trying to bring those negotiations to conclusion.
Would you want us to come on board by next, the next P?
I would say what makes sense for us is that you adopt it as part of the overall budgeting process.
Yeah, so if we could get a consensus, then I can get the information I need from the rate consultant and incorporate that into the budget and provide that information as to how it looks in the budget form and add back to council for their consideration as part of the overall.
I don't like the rate increase. Never, never did like rate increases, but we have to, we have to do it if we're going to sustain our, our water and sewer.
I think one of the things that's really important about this rate increase, and if you look at it with your remember bag, once you get past that second year, it really levels up.
It does.
And, and what your, the goal has to be is, is to get away from every four years having a large bottom where you incur those costs and you're able to self-fund those annual maintenance items we're talking about. And we have to get to that position to have a healthy and sustainable building department.
So that three dollars was a per month increase? And that what you're showing was what you felt was the average user in Manistee?
Yeah, let's go back to that. So. So this, this is, we, the ordinance as it is in our internal rate making says, you gotta look at, hey, they consider a six thousand gallon user to be a typical user. That's what the ordinance says. Some people use more, some people use less. It's probably not too far off.
It's pretty, it's pretty good number.
With the rate structure for that level of usage, under the internal ratemaking process, you would have an average bill of about seventy-three dollars a month, which is an increase of six dollars per month of seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents per year. Under the rate study structure, because more of the costs shifted into a fixed monthly charge, the average six thousand gallon user would have a bill of seventy dollars and forty-two cents. So it'd actually be less than what we would be proposing under the, the ordinance required internal rating structure. And that's an increase of three dollars and sixteen per month, or thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight dollars. But the lower volume users, in this case, if you look at the six percent line, that's, that's what they, they focus on. But the four percent line shows about a ninety point six percent increase as opposed to what we were saying was nine. So that's pretty much a wash. I didn't do that calculation. These little, littler volume users, smaller volume users show a huge percentage increase, but the actual change, you know, somebody who's not here at all during the year, doesn't use a drop of water, has that water service waiting for them the moment they walk in the house and turn that tap on. That's why you have a rate of service charge. It's all built into the ratemaking methodology. And so that, those people that don't use water would have that fixed monthly charge, just like they do now, just to a higher degree. So instead of being six dollars and sixty cents, it's thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And that means there would be an increase of about eighty-seven dollars a year. Somebody who uses two thousand gallons would see an annual increase of seventy fifty-six as compared to under the internal ratemaking methods, twenty-three seventy-six. So that's an increase of about forty-seven dollars per month, or forty-seven dollars per year, four dollars per month. So even though the percentages are big, I mean, how much did people's charger cable bill go up? It's just a, 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 I'm not trying to minimize that. The charger cable has been increasing their rates on a straight line, as has consumer energy. Now, I mean, they have. The rates have been going up. I can track that on my face and I, the rates have gone up significantly. So this inflation isn't anything, isn't anything new, but I think, I go back to what the rate consultant said, which this slide. It basically says, since two thousand and one, the city of Manistee's water and sewer rates, even though we have increases, we're not saying we haven't. Has trailed behind what the industry structures by a, a, you know, a little more twenty percent. And the plan that's in place with that model maintains that, yeah.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that, but if I understand this correctly, if council chooses to put in place the rate study instead of the budget recommendation, it appears that the increase is less for the average user. So given that, I would assume then that the revenue coming in is less? And how is that going to be handled? Are the expenses still being covered by, or do you foresee that the rate study holds the revenue based on the, the varying rates of increases and decreases neutral?
It holds a neutral. The rate study absolutely produces the required revenue to meet the needs in the budget.
As you're declaring.
Yeah, but, but yes, you're absolutely right. Because of the fact that the typical user sees that a small decrease, it would, it would appear that you wouldn't be generating enough revenue. But the whole purpose of the financial model, what the main consultants did, is to say we want to keep the total level of revenue consistent.
And I agree with that. And we pay for that, their professional opinion and study. And I would feel that personally, that we need to follow that rate study.
I'm comfortable with that as well. And what I liked about it was its allocation of costs, true costs and the transparency, as you mentioned, versus what some of the assumptions we made from our budgeting previous years. And I think that really made it hard, you know, hard and fast for me as a new user or you're adding, you know, a user, you can actually see real costs associated with those. And so I am comfortable with that.
Okay, so for the average user, they probably see a typical increase, thirty-six dollars a year.
Three dollars and seventy-one cents.
And then if you go back to the refuge, we also have a increase in the refuge, four percent. Do you recall how much on the average that might be?
They have that number, if you've given just one.
Sure.
Have there been other questions that council members have that, that we have, I answered for you yet? We have some additional ones that, that we, that we need to, do we need research from you and provide new information?
Just, just to clarify on the refuse, just for a little bit of background information. So there's two parts, and this again is for the benefit of all, there's two parts of the revenue. There's tax, revenue and rate, and there's user charges. They're roughly fifty-fifty, although the charge per service, the monthly charge is slightly, or would be slightly more under the proposal. In past years, they've been roughly fifty-fifty, then actually the property tax has been a little bit more. And the reason that those two are shifting is because of the five straight years of taxable value. I know that the general is less and less every year. The proposal in the budget, as was mentioned in the requisition, it actually costs for a twelve percent increase. For the typical residential user, that equates to a monthly increase of seventy-six cents per month or nine dollars per year. For somebody who's using three to six bags per week. If you have a tiny tote, it's a dollar and fourteen cents per month.
All right, and then that increase that we're looking at to fund an additional police officer, would you happen to have what the average taxpayer, that increase in military would be?
D, if you recall, two to seven, the average over is approximately fifty-six thousand?
Eighteen dollars per.
Please, twelve, thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars a year, is it? Thirteen or eighteen dollars, a fifty thousand dollar. That's what you guys, what you said.
I was going to say thirteen.
On a fifty thousand dollar tax, you go home, that prime four, six five five, that's twenty-three dollars a year.
So overall, for the average, what we're looking at is probably about a seventy dollar increase. I mean, if taxable value held even, we're looking at around a hundred dollar increase for our average household. Everything.
Utilities.
Utilities, right.
And the office. Yes.
You don't want to pay that, you know, hundred dollars per year.
About seventy dollars.
About seventy dollars per.
For year, for everything that we're.
Yes. For, for an average?
Some will see more, some will see less, but on the average.
Seventy for water, twenty-three for mileage, and one dollar for.
No, it's not seventy-two for water, it's thirty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thirty is the.
Can I just say, just for everybody's knowledge, my wife is not on insurance. So when we talk about this, I just want, I'm not protecting or cleaning up my home. My wife is on insurance deals, or the Michigan Department of Crashers.
My, I have two more.
Just so you know, just so everyone knows.
Sixty-two to seventy-five.
So I think it's. Was there any, I guess, what I just talked about, as far as the rate study? Are you guys in agreement with the rate study or?
We have to. I, I think it's, we spent the money after. I think we have to go up. I, I think it's a good. I think it's a sound, sound approach, though. It's not just because we spent the money. I think it's a very sound approach.